Second, 2025 meeting the Louisiana County Board of Supervisors to order.
I move that we convene in closed session pursuant to following subsections of Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711. One, in accordance with Section 2.2, 3711a3, Discussion on consideration and acquisition of real property for a purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Two, in accordance with Section 2.2, 3711a8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such castes.
Second. Mr. Crafton. Moving to second, we go into closed session. Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes, we're in closed session.
I call the meeting back to order.
Mr. Chairman, move to go back into open session. Second?
It is properly moved and second that we go back into open session. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is now back into open session. I will now, poll members, certify that to the best of your knowledge only public business matters All right, the first item is the adoption of the agenda. I think we do have a couple of changes.
Mr. Chairman, I've got four things. Number one, removing from the consent agenda the resolution authorizing a pass-through appropriation to the Louisa County Airport for federal and state aviation grant funding. Removing that one. We'd like to add under recognition, recognizing Steve Hopkins being named 2025 Sun Belt Exposition, Ag Exposition Virginia Farmer of the Year. He's with us tonight. Number three, under action items, we'd like to add a change order to address suitable soils and retaining walls. And number four, under new business, we'd like to delete the, new business slash action items, we'd like to delete the number two action item portion of that. I think there still might be a presentation.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
It is properly moved and second that we approve the amended agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
It is properly moved and second we approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is approval of the bills.
So moved.
Second.
It is properly moved and second that we approve the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It is properly moved and second that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is recognitions, and we will be recognizing Mr. Steve Hopkins, Mr. County Administrator.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hopkins, love for you and anyone you'd like to bring with you coming forward.
Just him.
Looks like just him.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors, members of the public, this is a resolution recognizing Steve Hopkins on being named the 2025 Sun Belt Agricultural Exposition Virginia Farmer of the Year. Whereas Steve Hopkins, a lifelong Louisa County rancher, producer, educator, and agricultural leader, has been named the 2025 Virginia Farmer of the Year by the Sun Belt Agricultural Exposition, a prestigious honor recognizing innovation, leadership, and commitment to agricultural excellence. And whereas Mr. Hopkins, a member of Virginia Tech's class of 1988, devoted nearly three decades as a Virginia cooperative extension agent, guiding farmers across the Commonwealth and improving profitability, adopting cutting-edge practices, expanding their operations, all while steadily growing his own family farm. And whereas today, Mr. Hopkins, alongside his wife Kristy and their sons Garrett and Blake, represents the seventh generation at Riverview Farms Cattle LLC, a diversified 1,200-acre Louisa County operation encompassing a 300-head commercial cow herd, a custom bull feeding enterprise, and a turkey operation producing over 150,000 birds annually, as well as hay, silage, and roe crops to support the livestock systems. And whereas Mr. Hopkins' leadership extends beyond the farm, having founded the Central Virginia Cattlemen's Association in 1998, now marketing over 8,000 value-added feeder calves annually, and having served in numerous leadership roles within the National Cattlemen's Beef Association, Growmark, Evergrow Cooperative, Virginia Cattlemen Association, Louisa County Ag and Forest Oil Preservation Committee, and Farm Bureau organizations. And whereas the Hopkins family is recognized for outstanding stewardship and sustainability practices, earning the Thomas Jefferson Soil and Water Conservation District's Clean Water Farm in 2022 for implementing cover cropping, rotational grazing, stream protection infrastructure, and advanced nutrient management planning. And whereas Mr. Hopkins was nominated for this honor by Charles Rawson, Louisa County Agricultural Extension Agent, who praised Hopkins as a visionary leader in Virginia's cattle industry and an exemplary mentor, innovator, and advocate for agriculture at the local, state, and national levels. And whereas Mr. Hopkins will proudly represent Virginia in the Southeastern Farmer of the Year Program at the 2025 Sun Belt Ag Expo in Moultrie, Georgia, where he will compete among top producers from across the Southeast. And whereas the Hopkins family embodies the spirit of family farming, agricultural innovation, and community commitment, demonstrating excellence in farming practices, business growth, and generational succession that ensures the continued success of Virginia agriculture. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Louisa County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes and congratulates Steve Hopkins on being named the 2025 Sun Belt Ag Expo Virginia Farmer of the Year, commending his lifelong dedication to agriculture, his exemplary leadership, and the positive impact he's made on Louisa County, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the agricultural community at large. Thank you for everything you do. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite you to present this.
Someone who recognized, President, 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 and we've been so involved in supporting the 4H. Thank you for that support. Thank you for your help in the recent hiring of our new ag coordinator. He's been instrumental in that process. County owes you on many levels a great, a great deal of that. Congratulations. I appreciate it. And I thank you very much. We appreciate it.
A lot on there. Thank y'all for this honor. It certainly is a great honor for my family. Would like to explain, my family would be here, but the customer crew came in, started chopping silage this morning, so they're back on the farm, you know, working. But appreciate everything, appreciate the recognition, appreciate what y'all are doing for ag preservation and land preservation in this county. Hiring Maggie, I think, is going to be a key, and this county being able to do something not only for the farmers here, but as example for Virginia. And I'm excited for the future. I'm excited that this county can put together a plan to make growth work with agriculture and work with preserving land. And in any way I can help with that, I'll be glad to, and certainly thank you for your vision and your steps that you've made forward. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Steve. Congratulations again. Now we come to public comment. I don't have any cards that anybody has signed that they wish to speak to the board. Anyone here wish to speak and address the board during public comment? All right. You made a face, sir. I don't know if you're just making a face or you wanted to talk. All right, so we'll close the public comment. We'll move on to information discussion items. The first item on the agenda this evening is a presentation by the Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development.
Hi, good evening. I'm Helen Cawthon, President of Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development, and I have with me my talent directors, Katie Delaney, I guess I should say your name. We're going to tag team it here today. We are the Regional Economic Development Group for Louisa County, seven other counties, and City of Charlottesville. I want to thank Christian Goodwin and let you all know, he has been a wonderful member of our executive committee and board. He's a past chair. And as some of you may recall, he won our, he was honored with our Lee Mittleditch Award last year. It's our highest honor for outstanding economic development. He's the only locality or government official who's ever received it, and there's only been four since 2014. So it's, we think it's a very prestigious award. We also love working with Andy, oh, I'm not advancing my slides here. So we're eight counties plus City of Charlottesville, you see Louisa. Wanted to thank again Christian and Andy Wade, your Director of Economic Development, works as one of our economic development partners and of course is a fantastic resource for the region. Right now Susan Gruber, the CEO of UVA Community Credit Union, is our current chairperson. We, the region's successes, you can see, this is just since 2021. Many of them, the big successes are really due to what's happening right here in Louisa County, and you all know that. With AWS, an $11 billion announcement, followed by Edge Core and a $17 billion announcement, that 34.5 billion is, most of that is Louisa County. We want to congratulate you on these fantastic successes. Edge Core in particular, CVPED, our Board of Directors, supported Shannon Hill Regional Business Park early on as a regionally significant site. That helped you get the first 598,000 Go Virginia grant, followed by a $743,000 Go Virginia grant. And that $1.34 million in Go Virginia Region Nine money helped tee you up to get the 11.59 million from Virginia Business Ready Sites. So I can tell you that our entire region really celebrates your success. You had unanimous support from all of the localities. We worked very hard to ensure that we had that, and I think the Edge Core result is really, is just amazing. I don't think any of us could have, or I couldn't have predicted that. CVPED now, so thank you so much for all your hard work. CVPED now has a $100,000 planning grant from Go Virginia for an Innovation Corridor Strategic Roadmap. We've hired Tekonomy, a consulting firm that does a lot of work nationally, to help us better understand the best economic growth opportunities associated with national security and intelligence, biotech life sciences, and also kind of what we call digital IT, cybersecurity advanced materials, mainly, I would say, IT-related things. And so we're very excited about that. Andy Wade is on our advisory group, so we look forward to his help with that project. Now I'd like to turn it over to Katie to talk a little bit about our other new initiatives. So really, one reason we're here tonight is to tell you about the Innovation Corridor Strategic Roadmap, so you know about it, and also to talk about Defense Affairs Committee. I should have started with that.
Thanks, Helen. And hi, I'm Katie Delaney, again, Talent Director, and for the last two months have been the interim program manager for the Defense Affairs Committee, as Helen said. So our board approved the Defense Affairs Committee to move from the Charlottesville Regional Chamber of Commerce to CVPED. We're excited about that for a number of reasons. First is that it now is regional and focused. So when it was under the Charlottesville Regional Chamber of Commerce, obviously that was City of Charlottesville, Albemarle County, and Green County was the focus of the Defense Affairs Committee at that point, and now it includes our full footprint. So we're excited about the opportunities that that presents. As Helen said, just following the Innovation Corridor study that's underway, there will be a report from Tekonomy in March of next year that will really help us strategize the next three to five years as a region. National security and intelligence is a core focus of that study, and so having the Defense Affairs Committee at CVPED really positions us to be able to help strategize and think through what the implementation for that can be. So we think the Defense Affairs Committee will be really instrumental and helpful in many ways already, but especially when we get to March, there's going to be a lot of opportunities for implementation. And then a big shift, the last one I'll name, with this transition from the chamber is being under CVPED allows us to imbue this committee with more of an economic development focus, which again, I think is going to come in handy with the Innovation Corridor. We know, as the slide says, in 2023, Walden Cooper did a study showing the economic impact of the sector, $1.2 billion. We think that's only going to continue to grow. Evidence shows that, and so to be able to have an economic development angle for this committee, I think is going to be really helpful for our entire region for the long term. Happy to answer any questions about that transition. We have, in the last two months, been meeting with Leadership Council, yes, updating you all and the other Boards of Supervisors on this update, and are planning for the long term with that committee. As Talent Director, I also just want to mention while I'm here, kind of a reminder that we have livingcentralva.org, which is a talent attraction and retention website that we continue to update. We want this to be a resource for all of our localities. We have a Live, Work, Play page underneath our main webpage, and so Louisa County does have its own feature on the Live section. We also have Lake Anna featured. We have, BioCat has an interview on there. Continue, please, to be in conversation with us about how this site could better serve you, and if there are things that you would like to see on it, I would love to help you get that up there. But this is a living site that we continue to use and to update, so please continue to use it. Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Helen or Katie? Well, thank you all very much. We appreciate what you do to promote Louisa County and the efforts that you do on our behalf.
Well, thank you all so much for letting us be here tonight as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Pat Hanley, who will give us an update on the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which is an exciting program that was started last year.
October 23.
Yes, sir.
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Has it been two years?
October 23, October of 23, he said.
Wow.
Our first books went out in October 23.
Man, time flies, doesn't it?
Yeah. It does. Thank you, and thanks for your support and continued interest in the Dolly Parton Imagination Library program. We shared with you kind of an update package here, and also a card. Please share the card. The QR code is how we sign people up. Ninety-eight percent of the children that are signed up are coming through the QR code. So if you can share that with your constituents, we'd greatly appreciate it. We just hit a milestone. We broke 1,000. This morning, we have 1,008 children enrolled in the program. Those children will all receive books in October. Takes about a month to get the mailing and everything set up for them. We have graduated 354 children since October of 23. These are children that aged out of the program at the age of five. Our goal, our five-year goal that we set when we began the program was 1,500 children per month will get books. That's 70% of the 2,100 children under the age of five in the county. We set the goal at five. We're going to meet that goal. We're going to break that goal before year five. 976 books will be mailed to children this month. The mailings have already started. The bill for that is about $2,300. The State of Virginia pays half of that bill. When the Louisa County Rotary Foundation is billed, we pay the other half of that bill. To date, since October 23, we mailed 18,083 books to children across all districts in the community. We do have a concern about the state funding. State funding was approved for fiscal year '25, '26, and '26, '27. We have 81,000 children, over 81,000 children enrolled throughout the state of Virginia. That's in 85 counties and 27 cities throughout the state. At $2.33 a book, the funding for fiscal year '25, '26 will probably continue with the 50% match. There is not sufficient money in the '26, '27 budget for the growth we have and the 50% match. So many people will work on that and try to get that number up so that we continue to get the 50% match. We've been fortunate with fundraising. Amazon Web Service gave us $10,000. The Cook Foundation gave us $4,000. The Louisa Library Foundation gave us $15,000. The Heritage Cares Group, that's the group that owns Spring Creek and other golf courses, they're running for the second year a gala and golf tournament on October 19 and 20. Half the proceeds from that golf tournament will go to the Dolly Parton program in Louisa. Last year, we raised $9,872 in that program. That's a lot of books. And Nancy Rutinsky, who's on our committee, and she plays at the golf course and works at the golf course, she's coordinating our efforts there. Probably our leading lead to getting people is Jo Lynn Bullock. She's a reading advisor instructor at the library. Jo Lynn has programs where they bring children in, even infant children, parents bring them in. She goes to churches, she goes to daycare centers with the QR code and signs up children constantly. She probably gives us 20 children a month. She adds to the program by getting her out there. The Informed Citizen, I have a copy of the Informed Citizen flyer. That's been very helpful. The QR code is on that. It goes out every month. been very helpful. The QR code is on that. It goes out every month, and people are made aware of the program and sign up. The Central Virginia Newspaper has, right from the beginning, been very supportive, helped advertise the program, promote the program, make people aware of the program. Louisa County Public School and the Resource Council periodically send out flyers to people and also create opportunities, like with the kindergarten enrollment this year. We had people there, and they were able to sign up siblings from the children that were going into kindergarten. One more team, Emma Ryan. She's a senior at Louisa County Public School and the Blue Ridge, Virginia Governor's School. Emma just joined our team. She approached us and asked if she could help. And Emma is planning to have birthday parties each month for the kids that age out of the program and/or graduate from the program, and we'll have them at the library, and each of those children will receive their own library card.
Oh, cool.
I listed the team members there. They also provided in a package, often people ask what books are going out. I shared with you the titles that went out in August of this year. Every month, those titles change and continue for several years before there's a repeat. But no child will get the same book over their five years in a program. Again, I appreciate your support, appreciate the opportunity to give you an update. If you have any questions or suggestions, I'd appreciate that.
Does anyone have any questions, Pat or comment?
Just thank you for what you're doing for the community.
Pat, I would, first of all, thanks for the update. It's hard to believe it's been two years since you first came and talked to us about the program, but I appreciate your passion. You provide, Mr. Goodwin and I, regular updates on the children that are enrolled, the children that graduate. And you guys have taken this, I mean, I wrote a couple of notes down. 354 graduated, over 1,000 enrolled, 18,000 books. I do have a question about those 18,000 books. Is there a way to recover those books and get them back to other children or even into the public library or something like that?
We encourage that. At the library, there's a lot of books are being donated back into the library. So, some of our books are coming back in there. We do have a problem, and I have to work this out with the post office. When books are not delivered, they're in limbo. And we're trying to get, work with the post offices and ask the post offices to save those books. One of our volunteers will come around, pick up the books, and we'll bring them to the library.
That's great. Just don't go to the post office between 1 and 2. They close for lunch.
Say, second?
I said, just don't go to the library between 1 and 2. They close for lunch.
Post office.
For the post office, yes.
They close for their lunch.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I mean, it's a wonderful, wonderful program, and you guys are doing a great job with it.
And thank you all for all the support you give us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Next is a discussion of Louisa County's legislative priorities for 2026. Mr. Goodwin and Mr. Blunt is here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And I'll ask Mr. Blunt maybe to make his way to the podium in hopes that he might give us his thoughts. But while he's on his way up, I do want to draw your attention to your packet, starting on page 62, which is your adopted priorities from last year. I know some of you all are thinking about this already. I know there's been some discussions, specifically when we talked about the dog tag issue, there was a suggestion that that be brought up this year. And I know some of you have talked to me offline about a couple of other things. But obviously, last year, we were interested in local zoning control and maintaining that. I expect that will be of interest again this year. Certainly, with broadband, we're bringing our project closer to completion here, certainly still interested in supporting efforts statewide, maintaining our state funding and flexibility. Moving on to page 63 now, just picking some random ones off of here, buoy maintenance and hydrola treatment. Mr. McCotter and the Lake Anna Advisory Committee, I know, are very interested in that again this year. Certainly, the same for freshwater algae blooms, equal revenue authority, jail costs, and small modular reactors, certainly a part of a discussion this year as well as they were last year. So, I'll ask Mr. Blunt if he'd like to come forward and offer us his wisdom on maybe pressing topics, things that he thinks we should be watching out for. And I'll turn the podium over to him if it pleases the Board.
Mr. Blunt.
Yes, Katie, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, David Blunt, Director of Legislative Services, Thomas Jefferson Planning District. Yeah, I think the, well, first, let me thank you all for your ongoing interest and engagement in the legislative process. I think you all, every year, work up a good list of legislative positions and priorities. You have your meeting with your legislators. That communication is very important. I know that you're engaging, you know, with your delegation during the General Assembly session. You know, every year, you know, is different. If the General Assembly keeps us on our toes, I'm sure you heard the governor, you had announced, you have some excess revenues in the current, I guess, for fiscal year '25 that are going to roll over to the current fiscal year. That coupled with some savings from legislation that he had vetoed and other transfers is going to make for a good bit of money for the legislature, the governor and the legislature to work with in the current fiscal year. I think that as we look to fiscal year '27 and '28, which is going to be the main priority for the General Assembly this coming session to develop that next two-year budget, they're probably going to be more cautious, I think, with the uncertainties of, you know, what the economy may look like, whether it's three months from now or six months from now, coupled with some expenses that they already know, you know, related to federal actions. I think they're going to probably take a cautious approach. Certainly, I think worthy to go back to the well and make some requests, whether it be for HAB or hydrola. You know, I think particularly in fiscal year '26, there might be some opportunities there. I think Mr. Goodwin noted the local discretion, particularly with regard to land use. I think we'll probably continue to be on the defensive again this coming session. You know, a number of the proposals that caused us some consternation may come back in a different form. I know there's some offline discussions going on, particularly as it relates to the energy discussions that were so prominent last year. I know you all will want to keep a very close eye on things related to data centers. There was a whole slew of legislation last year that was introduced related to data centers, you know, whether it be to the noise, to the water usage, to the electric usage, tax credits, to siting. None of those made it through the process ultimately, but I would expect that some of those will be back, and I will certainly work to monitor those with you. Affordable housing, you know, there will be a lot of discussion about that, you know, in the next session as well. So, I think it'll be an active one. Again, you know, we'll know more after the elections in November. We'll know more, I think, as it relates to the budget as we get farther into the fall and certainly into the next session as it relates to, you know, again, what the state of the economy is. So, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you all on your local priorities, input that you all may have as it relates to the regional program certainly is appreciated. So, I'll be working on that in the coming weeks as well and bring that to you all for a look and hopefully your approval in November.
Do you have anything? Does anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Blunt?
Thank you, David. You're a superstar.
I've got a comment.
All right, go ahead.
All of these lists you've worked hard on, and they're great priorities, but I particularly like the one with the development of road reviews. If VDOT's no longer going to do what they have done in the past, then some of that funding should come to the counties since they're having to pick up that. So, I hope that one goes.
Yeah, I know that we had talked about that last year and put that on.
Right.
No, two, well, first of all, thank you for what you do. Two things, and Mr. Goodwin referenced one that I think we're going to have a conversation with our legislators when we have our legislative workshop is about dog tags. We're changing that now to dog tax. I mean, it should be eliminated. Half the people pay it, half the people don't because it's never even turned in. So, that's something too. But you just heard, and I'm glad you were here, you just heard Mr. Hanley talk about the success of this program, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which is not just here in Louisa, it's nationwide, it's across the Commonwealth. But you heard him talk about, we're concerned about the ability of the state funding to carry us forward. You know, I'd just like to put that on your radar, and maybe we can talk to our legislators. You know, literacy program for children, we're still recovering from the impact of COVID with young children. I mean, now, some of those children are in upper elementary school and in junior high. You know, there's probably a lot of places state government wastes money, but literacy programs for young children is not one of them. I mean, if you can't read or you can't write, you're at such a disadvantage economically for the rest of your life. I mean, I, you know, you're here, and we're talking about that, and he just spoke. I just couldn't let that go by without saying that, so.
Yeah, I'd be interested in connecting with him and getting some more information or through Mr. Goodwin.
He's sitting right back there in the back of the room. So, wave your hand, Pat, so he can see you there.
Because I know, I don't know, it's been probably three or four years ago at least now that there was bipartisan, on a bipartisan basis, you know, a Virginia Literacy Act that was implemented. I think they're still doing some fine tuning to kind of address some of the challenges with the program. Maybe that's an opportunity there to bring this particular program into that discussion as they're perhaps looking to do some tweaking to that this year or through the Department of Education.
Appreciate it. Thanks for, yes, ma'am, you have something?
I have something. I sit on the vaping committee for the schools.
Yes.
And it's not just a school vaping committee. We've been trying to engage all of our legislators, and some of them have been very responsive. It's an issue, well, it's what's in the vapes. It's a real issue for the Sheriff's Department, too. It's the penalties. You cannot sell alcohol to a minor. You lose your liquor license. There's strict penalties. But it is okay to sell vaping materials and vapes, and you get a minor little $500 fine, slap on the wrist. It's nothing for them. Is there any talk or anything? We really like to start seeing some serious consideration towards the fines and the penalties for stores that are selling, because it is an epidemic, and it is hurting our youth from second grade, as young as second grade, all the way up to our 18 and 19-year-olds who are vaping, and it's what's in the vapes. And there's very, very little penalties for those that are selling. And so, we have been reaching out and engaging and talking and working forward on that.
Yeah, let me do a little backtracking on that to see if maybe there's been some legislation particularly related to the penalties the last couple of years. I do recall, last year, there was one bill that would have increased the state tax on vape, which, you know, I guess would be more of a disincentive.
It's still for the minors, selling to the minors. You know, adults can do what they want, but.
Yeah. You know, TJPDC, you know, serves as the administrator of the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board.
Yes.
And we've got a person out in the field that's, you know, in charge of compliance. And, you know, he is always reporting back to, you know, the growing number of places that are selling vape and really kind of seeing that as being in certain populations, I think, that you're talking about a more preferable option.
I mean, you know, we really see it as an epidemic of our youth in our communities.
I'll see what I can dig up and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
And a follow-up to that, I didn't get to read the article today, but I will. It was in a Time Dispatch. The Henrico Board of Supervisors was trying to crack down on vape shops, and the only thing I saw was the tagline that said they were stymied in the effort because of, and I haven't had time to read the article.
I haven't read it either.
Did you see it?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if that's a zoning thing or if it's a penalty thing, but yeah, that's.
It's an epidemic. I know the schools, not just here, but the schools in the elementary and middle school, it's an issue.
Yeah. I've got a high schooler, he's, you know, especially, you know, at the beginning of the school year, when he first started there, you'd be coming home, talking about the kids vaping in the bathrooms.
Yeah.
And it's how they're getting it, and it's the businesses that are selling to them with very little penalty. And so, our mission, and we're really pushing forwards, is to try and stiffen those penalties for those stores.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can you, just 30 seconds or less, I know we're running on this, can you just explain maybe to the people that are here and the people who are listening, this legislative process that we, David functions as a liaison with our legislators. Citizens come to us and give us the ideas, and then we present that directly to the legislators that represent Louisa County.
Well, there's two, it's really a two-pronged approach. So, we will have a legislative workshop with our, let's see, we have two senators and two delegates, correct? Two senators and two delegates because we're a split county. Probably in November, October, we typically have that. And those meetings are open to the public, where the majority of the time, our legislators attend themselves. If they can't attend, they'll send their aide. That's where the Board works on a very specific this and anything, this legislative platform that we've just talked about. We'll talk about that, the dog tags. I know there's going to be probably some discussion on short-term rentals, and we'll certainly bring up the funding for childhood literacy. And that's a great opportunity for us to interact on a real personal level with our legislators. But the real great thing about what David and the Thomas Jefferson Planning District do is they're kind of our lobbyists in Richmond, and they're there every day, and they're interacting for all the counties that they represent, and advocating on behalf of not only Louisa County, but the other counties in the Planning District. And they do a great job, and they do a great job in notifying us when something has gone the way that we want it to go. They do a great job in telling us when it might be going the other way so that we can contact our legislators. So, you know, what is it, 60-day session this year? So, it's a long session, 60-day session. So, you know, they're down there every day advocating on behalf of the people of Louisa County. So, again, you do one of those things. Most people don't know you're doing it, but it's really, really important work and what you're doing on behalf of the county. So, again, thank you. All right, next is a presentation, summer hydrola update and state of lac management. And I have Mr. Goodwin and Mr. McCotter. Who's going first? Mr. McCotter.
Mr. Chairman, panel supervisors, after years of effective hydrola management where needed, the year has finally arrived that we anticipated, and that is the year where management needs will outstrip the means of the Lake Anna Advisory Committee. So, dozens of citizen concerns have reached myself and a fellow by the name of Harry Looney, some of which you know that name, some of you might not. He's extremely helpful to the Lake Anna Advisory Committee. He's the Subcommittee for Water Quality. Often daily, we were getting citizen concerns, complaints, you know, updates about hydrola. So, we use these concerns, complaints, and site surveys to verify the presence of hydrola or not. Sometimes it's not. Most of the time, it is. And we compile an annual, and we do this every year, hydrola matrix. And that is part of what's called the Hydrola Management Protocol, as well as the Hydrola Management Plan. Every year, we've been doing this quietly for a long time. This year, lac has spent nearly $10,000 already to manage hydrola using aquatic herbicide and grass-eating carp. But more is needed to, you know, due to changing conditions and evolving growth of hydrola. So, we try to maintain a reserve fund of $40,000, just in case we have a year like this year. It's impossible to do because $18,000 a year from Louisa, Orange, and Spotsavina Counties, along with increasing buoy maintenance costs and a lot more hydrola coverage, lac can no longer keep up. So, our reserve fund now is approximately $24,000 in it. We have used much of what was budgeted this year for hydrola, for the management of hydrola. So, we now have additional coverage that does need our attention as soon as possible. So, we will hold a meeting on Thursday to consider turning to using the lac reserve funds. That way, we can manage the hydrola now so that we don't have as much to manage into the future. All right, that being said, I do anticipate a future, maybe a TOT Tourism Grant request to help us cover hydrola management, as well as help us replenish our reserve fund. Not now, in the future. So, I just wanted to give you that report, and all this is that we can work to ensure that Lake Anna continues to be a very productive economic engine for this county, as well as keeping our citizens happy. All right, that concludes my update. If Minister Goodwin has something to add to that, then the floor is yours, too.
No, I think you covered it. Supervisor McCotter and I both sit on lac. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have. I think the lac meeting on Thursday will be telling. Mr. McCotter is right. Mr. Looney is an incredible resource for the lake. We're very fortunate to have his volunteer efforts leading this charge. He's very technically capable, and this is just one of those years where it seems like hydrola has been a bit more stubborn of an issue to deal with than maybe it has been in years past. And lac has the ability to do that through its reserve funds, but they're there for situations like this, and they'll need to be replenished so that they can handle situations like these in the future.
I do have a question. Does anybody else have a question? A couple of questions, Mr. McCotter. So, assuming that lac... So assuming that lack decides to move forward with a treatment plan on Thursday, what's the timeline or do we have a timeline for treatment? And I don't need a specific day. I mean, we're talking.
Within 30 days. You have to, you have to get to the hydrola before the water temperature reaches 65 degrees because it enters a period of what's called senescence where it doesn't do anything, it doesn't grow anymore. So in order for us to make a dent this year and next year, you need to get to it before 65 degrees. This morning, the water was 78 degrees mainly, so we have time, 30 days.
And I'm going to throw in two places that I've had lots of phone calls is, one is Gold Mine Creek. Further you go back, the worse it gets. And the other is Waddy's Flats, what I call Waddy's Flats anyway, above, I mean, I think there's places there that are just impassable. Are most of the treatment spots on the Louisa side? I know that there were treatment earlier in the year.
We, we spent $19,000 early in the year to treat, um, about 20 acres in Plentiful Creek, which was Spotsavina.
Right.
So lack, those funds come from all three counties, so there's a matrix. All the areas are ranked. That particular area had hydrola two years in a row and it was creating a navigational hazard. That's generally what will put you at the top of the list, navigational hazard and, and continuing years of, of hydrola.
Again, this is treatment only for the public side of the lake, right?
Yes, sir. We are only talking about public side treatment.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else? Thank you, and I appreciate your leadership on this. And I know as a supervisor and as chairman of lack, you get far more phone calls about it than I do, but I, I've gotten my share, so thank you very much.
Happy to do so.
Next is the revenue committee update, and I believe that is Mr. McCotter.
Well, I can, I can take lead on that as well. I think that both.
Microphone.
Yeah, both Tommy and I were, were, we're happy to serve on that. I wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to serve on that. It, um, the finance committee was really, it was a pleasure to work with the staff on, on that, number one. They're incredibly professional, very helpful for me personally. It was, is very helpful to understand where we would, how we did our budgets and where the funds went. And that was one of the reasons why I asked if you would consider a finance committee and I think that was wise that you did that. And after consideration, you know, one of the things that, that we came up with was that citizen input would be very helpful because we're anticipating some additional funding coming from our, our, our data center investments around the county. And what we decided was that, um, why not let citizens help us determine where the additional funds would be spent? So to do that, we came up with a, a survey where the citizens would rank in order of importance, the, the various things are on that survey that those additional monies could be used for. I'm sure that Supervisor Barlow might want to add something to that, and I know that Administrator Goodwin also has some input to what we talked about.
One of the key concerns or goals that we had was to identify, um, areas that we could look to to pay down debt that we currently have. And Ms. Colvin was very good at pointing those out to us and I learned that a lot of the stuff is in bonds, which can only be paid down at certain times. But we've also identified when those can be paid down and that's a priority is going to be to pay off existing debt that we have and, um, keep a track on when the things come up that we can put this money, anticipated money to paying down that debt and get us sooner. We're in a good position now, but it'll put us in even better position if we can not have debt to begin with.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes, sir. Supervisors McCotter and Barlow have told you everything I'm going to tell you in my very brief presentation, but I'll go through it and, and we, the three of us can answer any questions and, and Ms. Colvin can answer any questions that you may have. So again, looking at potential new revenue sources, just like the last iteration of the revenue committee did, really looking at three things for the purposes of this forecast, and that's real estate and personal property taxes from Amazon going left to right, the potential for a small modular reactor at Dominion. We used one SMR for purposes of this modeling, same modeling that we used for the last iteration of the revenue committee. And then other potential sources may be identified in the future. And just a recap, um, the supervisors on this revenue committee agreed with the first revenue committee's focus on using committed allocations, developing percentages in advance, only applying those percentages to new dollars, uh, so making it very clear that this applies with the new dollars coming in from the sources that the supervisors spoke about earlier and that the listing of, of percentages just, that's draft, but that was the draft as it stood from the first revenue committee, using that as an advanced allocation, um, allocating the income, using a percentage basis from those allocations and then showing that as a separate committed line, uh, again, on the balance sheet. So just a recap kind of of where we came in today. And then just some, some considerations that this version of the revenue committee wanted to, wanted to make sure were clear. Number one, emphasizing that this is a forecast, this is planning for the future and forecasts can change. It, it's great to do this advanced planning and lay this groundwork and this structure now as long as we, we bear in mind that, that this is just that, it's a forecast. As Supervisor, Supervisor Barlow said, emphasizing early debt satisfaction wherever possible, so I'll go into that in a little bit more detail. And as Supervisor McCotter said, soliciting public input as part of this planning process. So we, we've got another iteration of the revenue committee coming after this. We're definitely, this is still a, a very much a work in progress, but soliciting public input. So in a little bit further detail, Supervisor Barlow talked about clarifying where we stand from a debt standpoint. This is a lot of numbers. I tried to throw some highlighting on here. The highlighting will make a little bit more sense on the next slide, but these are our current, a summary of our current debt issuances. And I highlighted the ones that can be paid early in green and in yellow. So the ones that are in green, um, those are VRA, Virginia Resources Authority debt issuances that the county could pay off in either FY '27 or FY '36. It's worth noting, as you all know, that a, a great deal of the county's debt is issued on behalf of the schools through the Virginia Public Schools Authority. That debt cannot be paid off early. The Virginia Resources Authority, which issues county debt for utilities projects, things like that, that can be paid off early. And then down at the bottom, highlighted in yellow are a pair of, again, VRA, so not VPSA, Virginia Resources Authority debt that the county has issued in conjunction with Fluanna County through the James River Water Authority. I have not discussed any type of an early payoff of JRWA debt with Fluanna County. So if they listen to this presentation, they will hear it at the same time that you did.
Those numbers in yellow on the right-hand column was our half of that?
Yes, that is correct. That's, that is Louisa County's half of.
Possible to think that we could pay down our half and they just.
Possibly. That would require some contractual negotiating, negotiations with Fluanna, but that's definitely a possibility.
Okay.
Um, and then moving away from this wall of numbers, and I'm, I'm sorry, it's a lot of numbers, it's very busy. So this is what our debt payments look like today on the top green line. So the, the revenue committee's forecasts also are, make a hopeful assumption that perhaps the county would not need to, to issue debt in the future, that we'd, we'd be able to cash fund, fund at least in the short term, um, any long-term obligations. And so this declining set of lines represents our payments for existing debt and they go down obviously over time as debt is paid off. So the green line is where we are now. If we don't do anything, the lighter green line, kind of in the middle of the three lines, is if we just pay off this debt that was highlighted in the darker green. And if we were able to negotiate some type of an early payoff, then our debt payments would go down to the bottom line, which is the one in yellow. And across the bottom is the fiscal years between now and the year 2055. I know those numbers at the bottom are small.
2055 would be the, um, the debt we just picked up on the middle school and the CT Center.
Yes, sir.
Which is a 30-year.
And that would be it.
It's a 30-year bond, not payable early.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. So, and, and just a couple of numbers there as well. The little table up on the top right is unrelated to the graph, uh, but just worthy of note that currently your debt as a percent of total assessed value is 1.7%. And your policy states that it should be less than 3.5%. And currently your debt service payments, so the amount that is paid on an annual basis to satisfy loan payments is 6.2%. And your policy, again, set by the Board of Supervisors, stipulates that it'd be less than 12%. And I should note Supervisor Barlow brought this up during our revenue committee meetings. Those policies were developed in conjunction with a review of many, many local governments across the Commonwealth by, by our auditors, um, who suggest that those are good ratios to use for local governments. So as Supervisor Barlow noted, we compare fairly well. And should this forecast hold true and this allocation hold true, you would be able to pay down debt much earlier than you would otherwise. So I'll pause there and see if there are any questions on debt. Lots of numbers, lots of facts, lots of talking. What did I not say clearly? I'm sure it was plenty.
I think you said a lot clearly, but I would point out that when our auditors were here several months ago and gave their, their review of our audit, I asked the auditor where we stood on our debt load and he said he would rank Louisa County as excellent in our debt loads. I would point that out.
Yes, sir.
That, that the vast majority of our debt is capital improvement projects, whether that's schools or JRWA or whatever it happens to be. Any other questions, any other comments?
I, I do have one more before I conclude the project, but if there's another debt question, please.
Well, I just wanted to say while we have the revenue committee, we have our finance team, we have you, the credit for all for our finance and having our debt ratio and having everything up to par goes to our deputy county administrator, Wanda Colvin.
Hundred percent.
Over here who is in behind the scenes and works really hard to keep us on track.
She is amazing.
Okay, that's all.
No, that's great. That's great. Thank you for bringing that up. And then the, the second point as Mr. McCotter brought up was a, a recommendation that this committee had to survey the community. And so that sparked a, a spirited discussion that spanned several meetings about the best way to survey for how these things should be ranked and how we should ask the public. And a lot of, a lot of discussion there, a lot of discussion about what words we use, how we define words. And so this is still a little bit of a work in progress as well, but I wanted to throw this kind of current draft on the slide as well. And I'll, I'll take the time to read it because the print's so small that I'm sure you, you can't see it from back there, but it was important for me to get this layout splashed up on the screen and that's why I use this small print, and I'll explain that in a minute. So county's revenue committee is drafting conceptual framework for using future revenue growth that can best serve our citizens. This effort is a work in progress and your voice matters. Watch the, watch the committee's presentation on the county's YouTube channel and provide your input to help shape the prioritization of this funding. And now I have to pull up my screen because my eyesight is getting so bad that I can't read that little black print over there. I'm so sorry.
Happy to assist, Administrator.
Please, can you read the, just the.
How do you prioritize the following initiatives? Please rearrange the below to reflect your preference with one reflecting your top preference and 10 reflecting your lowest preference.
Thank you. So, and do you mind reading the category titles as well if you don't mind? I'm so sorry.
Happy to do so. Please note the initial order is randomized. Recreation projects, rural preservation, tax rebates reductions, HAB mitigation, litter mitigation, general fund reserves and long-term capital reserves, road projects, planned capital projects and airport upgrades, public safety judicial facilities, water sewer utilities, infrastructure.
Thank you very much. And then there's only four boxes down there. The whole survey actually shows 10 boxes and we can use as many boxes as we need based on the number of categories that we would like the public to rank. And they can just drag these using a mouse into the box that they see fit from a prioritization standpoint. We initially had this, it's just a list that you would drag up and down like maybe a more traditional survey. We had to go to another survey provider to get this layout because people brought up good points. It kind of colors the way you look at the list when you see something at the top, even if it's just alphabetically listed or if it's randomly shuffled. And we don't want people to read this and say, well, the board thinks that road projects should be at the top or tax rebates should be at the bottom or something like that. So this list will randomly shuffle and you have to drag it out of kind of a line rather than a list.
Oh, that's cool.
So this isn't the, this isn't the final iteration. Kudos, big kudos to Cindy King, uh, who really helped us pull this, this layout together. This isn't the final version. We do anticipate including definitions for each of these in that space between the question and the listing of the categories so that people understand if you're not familiar with, you know, what is a, why does, I didn't think the county did road projects. I thought VDOT did road projects, which has come up repeatedly. And it's a great question. Yes, but if we want to score better in smart scale, we might throw some local funding into a road project application in smart scale as some of our neighbors do sometimes. So just helping people to understand that a little bit better. So that's all I have. I think we're going to continue to work on this survey a little bit and I'm happy to entertain any input that you have. And I'm very grateful on behalf of myself and Wanda and the staff who have worked with, with Chris and Tommy, their input was fantastic, just like the first iteration of the committee was, and we're looking forward to the next round.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Mr. Barlow.
This, seeing what you've done with and send it with this selection and the way it's listed there now, there's no bias. You pull it out of a list and put it where you want it. I think that did exactly what we were talking about doing and I applaud you all for that.
Thank you.
So, um, first of all, I'd like to thank Supervisor Jones and Supervisor Woodward, who spent six months developing the framework that we're working on. So thank you all for your efforts. And then the last two months Supervisor McCotter and Supervisor Barlow, as this continues to work, um, I'm going to appoint Supervisor Barnes and myself to wrap this up in September and October. But I would like to also emphasize what we've said before. This is a working document. I mean, this is, nothing here is set in stone. This is a working document. And, and of course, all the things that we talk about, I think it's worth mentioning, all the things that we talk about on future revenue are based on that future revenue actually coming in. And we can't do anything with the future revenue until the future revenue is here. But I think it's a very prudent exercise for this board to look at how the citizens want us to look at spending on priorities, the debt repayment. I know one of the ones that I, I want to have a great deal of discussion input about is tax rebates and, and, and tax relief to our citizens. I think, I think we could probably massage that a little bit. The other thing I would ask to question, um, I know your surveys still work in progress, but let's just say it's 10 topics. Maybe we should have 11 boxes in case there's something that somebody wants to add in that's not listed there.
The committee suggested, the committee suggested that as well, sir.
Yeah, that might, that might be a really good idea, but thank you all for your efforts and, uh, thank you for your efforts. And Mr. Barnes and I will work over the next two months with staff and then we'll, we'll have something to talk about in November, which really is, budget season's already started, so it's, it's very topical. Thanks very much. Next is under new business, a resolution authorizing a budget transfer to Louisa County Airport. Ms. Colvin, no, no, Mr. Way. I was going to say, good Lord, Wanda, you're not feeling well.
It's like Ms. Colvin or a different.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, the request for you tonight is a $27,000 transfer, transfer to, um, pay off a, or buy out the remaining term of an agreement between the IDA and DES Properties LLC. DES is an existing business within the airpark. They own a hangar or they built a hangar on the airport property. And as you know, the IDA currently owns the airport. It's slowly transitioning to ownership of Louisa County. And historically, the IDA has allowed private individuals to build their own hangars on the airport property for 25-year lease or agreement terms with an annual lease of a payment of $1. And at the end of that 25-year term, that property reverts to full ownership and full use of the IDA. Just to give you a little background before I get into the, to the weeds here, but this is essentially a house cleaning item as we transition to ownership as the county and also will allow us to retain all the revenue from all hangar rentals in-house. In 2008, the IDA entered into the agreement with DES. That agreement runs through 2033. That agreement runs through 2033. DES initially owned aircraft that they housed in their hangar, subsequently sold the hangar, and then they started using the hangar for storing business equipment on the airport property. In 2017, the FAA changed their policies, and the properties encumbered by the FFA through grant process and grant awards, and also the Virginia Department of Aviation, so they have somewhat control over what happens on the airport property proper. They changed their policies. We notified DES, and at that time, the IDA entered into a handshake deal with DES to lease the hangar for $2,700 a year. Subsequently, the IDA sublet their lease to an individual pilot who houses their plane there now. The IDA kept some airport equipment within the hangar building and dropped that individual's lease payments to much lower than what our current market rates for that hangar. Right now, we pay more to DES than we get in rental from this hangar. Buying out the remaining term of the agreement with DES will allow us to take that hangar rent back to market rates, and for the next eight years, we will charge more, we will be the recipient of more revenue than the $27,000 that I'm requesting tonight to pay off the remainder of this agreement to DES. He's 100% on board with doing this. The alternative is, we continue under the 2008 agreement, and he's allowed to market it to anybody he wants to, charge any rate that he wants to. He retains the revenue. We have the option to match what he's getting for revenue if he were to do it on his own. I think this is a much cleaner transaction, much cleaner break. He's willing to do this, and I think that's what we should do. That's what I recommend we do.
Move, we approve it.
I'm promptly moved and seconded that we approve this resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ambassador, thank you, Mr. Wade. Next is, under new business action items, is a resolution authorizing a budget supplement for this middle school turf field capital project.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this is a late addition to the agenda because this issue was kind of coming together as the board packet was coming together last week, and it was so late coming together that I'm going to read you the resolution since I don't have a printed copy in front of everybody. So, "Whereas the Louisa County Board of Supervisors approved the capital project to construct two turf fields of the middle school, whereas it's been determined that in order to satisfy suitable fill requirements for the retaining wall, that an additional appropriation of up to $280,000 is needed to complete the project, and whereas the additional funds were not included in the 26 budget and need to be appropriated at this time, now therefore be it resolved on the second day of September that the Board of Supervisors hereby authorize as a budget supplement to the middle school turf field capital project in the amount of $280,000 to meet suitable fill requirements for the retaining wall. The source of the funding is county long-term capital reserves." Background on this project, we were hopeful that we might sidestep this issue. When you build a retaining wall, you have to use specific types of fill on the inside of the retaining wall that's actually holding the earth, and that suitable fill is required to ensure that the wall can stand and hold the earth behind it, which in this case is the fields. And the field construction is progressing smoothly. If you've been out there, you see that I believe they've got turf on one field already. The other field is moving well, but we need to get this wall finalized on the backside of the field, and we were hopeful that we would be able to identify suitable soil on the field site itself after all the clearing efforts to satisfy these requirements. That did not end up being the case. We were not able to figure this out in advance because it's a pretty significant amount of fill, and that fill has to be tested and stockpiled in process, which has its own expense if we're going to run that route. So, this was a possibility that we would have to obtain external fill in the form of 57 stone, and we will have to, and that is the point of, or that is the purpose of requesting this change order from the board. So, I stand ready to answer questions. I hope that makes sense, and I'm happy for you all to consider this tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm not really happy about this, but I don't see where we have any choice. We're too deep in at this point, so I move we approve the resolution.
I'm going to second that. I agree with Tony on that we're too deep in. We have to move forward. We have community waiting on these fields.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Woodward.
While I certainly agree with Mr. Williams and Mrs. Jones that we're really deep into this, I voted against this to start with. I just, I didn't think we were ready to roll with this and spend over $6 million on two turf fields. We just keep getting additional amounts that we have to pay. I am going to abstain from voting on this.
Okay. Any other discussion? I was being pro, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I've not been in support either, but at this point, it appears that it's going to be much cheaper to move forward with this as it is than to try and hold out and come to a different type of resolution. So, I'm going to support it just to move this thing forward and get it done. Two of the fields, the fields are virtually in.
Yeah, they're gorgeous.
It's a matter of backfilling this wall to finish this thing up, so I think we need to finish it and be done with it.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Cuckoo District, it was not in favor of this in the beginning, and that's how I voted, and I will say consistent with my vote on that.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstaining, one abstention. Motion passes. Four in favor, one against, one abstention. Now, we'll move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I got two committee reports.
Okay.
I'll make them quick, though. First, I wanted to say I sit on the JAUNT Committee, and I also represent on our Stakeholders' Committee, and at our last Stakeholders' Meeting in the beginning of August, we were pleasantly surprised to find out that JAUNT received unexpected federal funding that they were not expecting to come in. So, they actually had an excess in capital funds this year, and they will be writing checks back to all of the localities that they represent. The county is expected to receive $83,410 back from JAUNT. This is not going to be a yearly thing. This is just sort of a one-time, wow, we got more government funding than we expected, so they are giving it back to the communities. They're also working very hard with a marketing firm to change their image and to get word out about what they're doing and how they're doing it and contacts, and really, especially in the rural communities where they are not reaching the citizens that they think and that myself and the other rural counties have been pushing for, where they're not reaching those citizens, this marketing firm hopefully will find the ways that they can reach, get the information out, and we can get more riders. We have one of the highest riding memberships out of the rural counties, though. So, that was very exciting for me. I really would like to see it reach some of our senior citizens in our towns and find out more and be able to use JAUNT more. Also, I've received complaints about long phone, when you call to schedule a ride, you have to wait on hold forever. They are working. They're looking at AI solutions. They're looking at all sorts of solutions to make it easier for the rider to book a time and have a JAUNT bus come and pick them up. So, that's the first one. So, good news on JAUNT, and they really have strong leadership at JAUNT right now. Very excited about that. The second one, Mr. Goodwin and I sat on the Hamilton Road Bridge Committee, and we are happy to announce that there has come to a resolution with that. Just a little background, Hamilton Road Bridge has been closed about nine years ago between VDOT and the Historic Green Springs Incorporated. They came to a stalemate, I would say. They couldn't come to an agreement on the bridge, on replacement of the bridge, or fixing the bridge, or what. The bridge then fell over the last eight to nine years into disrepair, subsequently been closed. Residents on that road have been very frustrated. Some have to drive 10 miles out of their way to get home to and from work because of the bridge being closed. Emergency personnel could not get down it, and I think that was our biggest stance from the county. We wanted to make sure that we could get emergency personnel resources down Hamilton Road, to the farms, to the residents who live on that road without having to go 10 miles around. So, with that said, VDOT and the Green Springs Historic Incorporated, they came to an agreement, and the bridge will be moving forward with replacement. That was last week. So, the residence on that is a win, and we're going to be working with the Louisa Historical Society to find a way that we can memorialize the bridge, tell the bridge's story, tell the historic past of the bridge, and work in that direction. So, that is finally, it closes the door on that, thank goodness, and to the relief of the residents.
Any other committee reports? Ms. Woodward.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, thank you. There was a lot of buildup for the Commission on Aging Summer Bash. Mr. Chairman Adams was there, and appreciate that. There was an unfortunate situation at the Betty Queen Center. This was on the Thursday. On Wednesday, actually, it had started on Tuesday, they had kind of an outbreak of a bad virus, stomach virus, and so, JABA shut down their operations down there on Thursday and Friday. We didn't find out about this until like 7:30 Wednesday evening. So, called Christian. Christian got in touch with Anderson. We all tried to get in touch with James, finally caught up with James down at the Betty Queen Center, and within, right at an hour, the county had brought their people in there to fog the building, to kill the viruses and germs, but we still felt that it wouldn't be right for us to bring in particularly seniors the next day and have them in the building. So, we already had the food, hamburgers and hot dogs and that type of thing, so we went ahead and had everything outside, and we had a little bit better than 50 people, which we were expecting about 140 to 50 people. But anyway, it all turned out fine. Certainly appreciate Chairman Adams being there, and the folks got some good food, and a lot of people took some home with them, and so, I think it turned out okay. Next year, we'll probably do it earlier, first part of the summer, but we're planning on having our Christmas dinner the first part of December, like always. So, anyway, but I just, I really am saying this to let you know, because I know I've kind of worried you all about it, to come, but it's just amazing what happened in, right at an hour's time, that our staff is so capable and qualified to handle things that this whole thing was turned around and decided within that timeframe. So, I really appreciate them even more now than I did before, so I thank them.
Yeah, there was a lot of quick movement in a short period of time.
Absolutely.
And I can vouch, the food was good, and the oatmeal raisin cookies were really good.
They're good.
Any other committee reports? We don't have any board appointments. County Administrator's report, Mr. Goodwin.
Just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, your monthly reports for the period over the summer are included in the board packet. Fearly voluminous there. Do ask me any questions that you may have on those. I would draw your attention, starting on page 130, there's a request, a request from the Department of Historical Resources to submit Bright Hope Baptist Church, that's in the Trevilleans area, to the National for Inclusion, potentially on the National Register of Historic Places. Those applications are always very interesting readings, so if you have a few minutes to review that, I'd encourage you to do.
I have a question about that, actually.
Yes, sir.
If they make the National Register of Historic Places, is that going to require them to get approvals every time they want to paint something or do something outside that thing?
I'm not certain of that answer. I've wondered that is...
I'm just wondering if maybe you want to, if you want to talk to them about that, because it's a really nice building and everything, but it's pretty, you know, it's got aluminum siding on the outside. I was reading a little bit about it, and it's not to its original state, and a lot of times when you work on those things, they make you take them back to the original state. I'm just asking, so I have the dog in the fight.
It's entirely a fair question. The application, I think we've had a couple of them go through recently, and I read this one like I did the last one. There are no controls that I saw on a scan included there, but I don't know if there's anything that they have to sign otherwise, so I think that's a very good question. Thank you, Supervisor Williams. Also, draw your attention briefly to page 185, which is your ongoing progress reports on the Virginia Telecommunications Initiatives Progress Report for broadband, not only in Louisa but in the region. That's the grant that we're all part of. I'd remind you that audit final field work is scheduled for September the 29th, so please be gentle with your Deputy County Administrator and her staff during that time as she works to get us another Certificate of Excellence in financial reporting, and do encourage your constituents to attend the Fall Festival on October the 11th. Thank you very much. That concludes my prepared remarks.
You know, you mentioned the broadband, and we didn't talk about it since we only have one meeting, but I think it's worth noting, maybe, I don't even know if it was under committee reports, that last month, we did have a celebration here in the county with our electric providers with Firefly, that our countywide fiber project is 95% complete, basically on target to be completed by the end of the year with a few extra that were found and credit to Firefly for finding those that weren't mapped out by the end of the first quarter in 2026. So, that 80-some million dollar project is exactly where we want it to be in four years, so.
Sir.
That's certainly worth noting. Next is the public hearing that we have tonight. It's an ordinance to amend Louisa County Code, Chapter 14, Animals, Section 14-21, Dog License Required Amount of License Tax in Section 14-24, What Dog License Shall Consist Of, and here to give that presentation is our County Attorney, Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this ordinance is to amend two sections of Chapter 14 Animals, and the first section is Section 1421, and under that section, it will now be amended to provide for a lifetime dog license, and that price will be $10. And the second section is 1424, and that is just going to be amended so that the, excuse me, before I get to that, the second part of the Section 1421 is also to allow for a kennel block of up to 50 dogs, and that charge is $50 for the license fee. And the second section, 1424, is amended to no longer require the sex of the dog on the tags, and that is it for the changes.
And just to be clear, that this is a recommendation from our county treasurer to streamline the process and will actually save dog owners who follow the rules money in the long term.
Absolutely correct.
Any other questions, Ms. Smith?
I just got a comment.
Yes, sir.
Once again, this is ridiculous. It's a mandate from the General Assembly that we have to do this, and, but we can do it once in a lifetime, and that is, seems even more ridiculous, and more reason to get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, so we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight which is to address the board on this?
Yes.
This ordinance change? Yes, please. Just state your name, your voting district. You have three minutes. I'll give you a warning when you have 15 seconds.
Thank you. My name is Ann Melli. I'm here as a citizen of Spotsylvania County, which is right across the border, but I'm concerned about animal welfare everywhere, so I wanted to offer my concerns. Sounds like this is a done deal, but I wanted to at least share some concerns. With the cuts in the ACO staff and the over, you know, constantly overcrowded shelter and delays in the shelter expansion, I really don't understand cutting any revenue source that supports these programs. You mentioned that there's about $8,000 income. It seems tiny, but state law requires you to set aside this money in a separate fund and only use it for animal control, shelter, rabies, and spay neuter programs. Assuming you're doing this, I can't believe these programs wouldn't be happy to have these funds, especially the shelter, to have $8,000 towards their spay neuter and vet expense programs. It is a tax, and it helps dog owners support animal welfare for dogs in this county. If, as stated tonight, only 50% of citizens are complying, that's a problem of education, efficient record payment systems, and compliance by the treasurer is off, not kneecapping this program. I do think you will lose money in... I do think you will lose money and revenue on this proposal. I did have a couple of specific concerns. Will the treasurer continue to track the three-year rabies vaccine compliance even on the lifetime tag animals? I would suggest instead of lifetime tags that you issue a three-year tag, which is what the current rabies renewals are, so that, which will aid the treasurer in doing that three-year rabies renewal monitoring, instead of having a separate program to do that. Also, I think you need to consider that lifetime tags will wear out, and additional tags will be needed at a state cap of only $1 each. Also, I wanted to caution you, the state law requires the treasurer to maintain a license record for the term of the license, which means your treasurer is going to be having to maintain the record of each lifetime license for the lifetime of that dog, whenever that is, so you're probably going to end up storing more records. The kennel provisions, thank you for just going with one price for up to the allowed $50. I would urge you to include a reference in your ordinance somewhere that references the definitions that are found in the state code where the kennel is defined, and additional requirements for kennels are defined.
15 seconds.
It is?
15 seconds.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I know this is a, you know, people think that this is a hassle. I've been a lifetime dog owner, and it's never been a hassle, and I would prefer that you support the animal welfare programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would wish to address the board? All right, no one? All right, seen none, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the board.
Move, approve it.
Suck it.
Improperly moved and seconded that we approve this ordinance. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
For Mr. Barnes, so moved.
Second?
Suck it.
Improperly moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.